Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting for Monday, March 7th at 6:00 PM of the Southfield City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
President.
Brightwell.
Here.
Cruz.
Present.
Frazier. Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum. And excuse Councilman Frazier.
Yes, thank you. Would you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States, with the right of passage, one nation, united in the common good, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have our communications. And the city of Southfield has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected officials that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official perform his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace. By disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city of Southfield, it may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. First, we have Mr. Greg Keeler.
I have a question. The new infrastructure money that will be coming to the city, will that be used to install sewer, sanitary, stationary lines that weren't installed with the $3.8 billion for the completion for the residents of Southfield? The pathway that is planned to be put on Lasher Drive, from Ten Mile to Civic Center Road on Lasher Drive, one side of that street has a cemetery. Was the price put in there for digging up the cemetery plots? Because it's right there by the road. So you can't really go down the street unless you pick it up. Why was Supervisor Murphy, M.J. Murphy Orchard Plot Estate? Everything on it has got a sewer line, except for the residence of Circle Drive. But Lawrence Tech, which is in our backyard, has gotten sewer lines. Are you trying to gentrification of the neighborhood? Or does it not work for the residents that live near Lawrence Tech? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. John Abbo. Hope I spoke, said that right. A-B-B-O?
Yes, I just signed in, but we have, we're on the agenda.
Oh.
Under Loom Cannabis today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Caroline, the guidance?
Hello. Yeah, my name is Caroline Del Giudice, but it's hard to pronounce, so. I've been a resident of the city of Southfield since 2018. My husband David and I own two properties in the Evergreen-Loser neighborhood, just like in between Nine Mile and Eight Mile. And I'm here today to raise some concerns about trash collection and code enforcement, particularly in our neighborhood. To be honest, I could easily like fill up my three minutes complaining about GFL, but I'll keep it short and simple and say that their work in my neighborhood is not held the same standard as GFL services in other parts of Southfield and other like neighboring cities. And we have like brought this up with GFL, and according to them, ever-present debris floating through our neighborhood is due to improper bagging and resident carelessness. However, I would argue that after seeing the trash truck and how they handle the bins, it seems like also carelessness on their part. And we've like, we talked to the GFL guy on the phone earlier this week, and he was kind of putting it off on the residents. And I'll, you know, I will cop to like, we have neighbors across the street who are pretty careless with their trash. They just put it out in bags on the curb. Sometimes they put it out after the trash truck is combined, so it sits out all week long. The animals like rummage through it because there's a lot of wonderful natural wildlife in our neighborhood, but they love the trash. So every Friday afternoon, I come home from work and I pick up trash from my yard, and it's very frustrating. And I understand, we have contacted code enforcement in the past, and I know that they have like contacted our neighbors and contacted, that they send out their letters, but I think that perhaps there needs to be something louder done. They might need to be a little stricter about this enforcement, because I believe that my neighbors who are, you know, culpable, like who are culprits of this, don't check their mail, and they're not looking at the letters that code enforcement is sending them. So what was my next point? As a result, their trash is everywhere. But so my question is, like, what can we do to improve this? And my thought is that perhaps we should work to like standardize the bins, much like you see in like Redford in Detroit, where there is the, like, what is it called? Automatic side-loading trash trucks? That way, you know, at least if we standardize the bins, there will be less just bags out on the curb for the animals to get right through. And hopefully that could resolve some of the problems. And then if that can't be done, perhaps code enforcement could be a little stricter and have some more bite to their, to their services. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, to the, can you leave your address with the city clerk, and we can have code enforcement address it?
Yeah, yeah, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
Next, we have Mr. Gerard Mullin.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Madam President, tonight, I wish to talk about Chapter 7. Chapter 7 in the latest edition of the Southfield City Charter. Chapter 7 is the Court Chapter, which describes in great detail the Southfield Municipal Court system. This description takes up to 10% of the total contents of the charter, and it takes up to 100% of the total contents of Chapter 7, the Court Chapter. Sad to say, the Southfield Municipal Court was abolished. Yes, abolished, totally, on New Year's Day in the year 1969, over 53 years ago, and was replaced by the 46th District Court on the aforementioned date, as mandated by the 1963 Michigan Constitution and implemented by Public Act 154 of 1968, as every fifth-grade student of civics here in the great state of Michigan well knows. Sadly, the abolished court was never acknowledged in later editions of the Southfield City Charter, and it resides today as a squatter in Chapter 7. Madam Chair, please check out your own, your very own charter, the fifth edition. That is the latest edition, published in the year 2014. And please, Madam Chair, focus on the five pages. Count them. Uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco. Five outdated pages that make up the Court Charter, the Court Chapter, Chapter 7. Check it out, check it out. Check out page 28 through and including page 33. Five pages of 100% of useless verbiage. Verbiage that belongs in the ashes of history, but not that in the latest edition of the Southfield City Charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Last Monday, I made an inaccurate statement when I said that it was Councilman Lloyd Cruz that voted against keeping communications at the top of the agenda. It was, in fact, Councilman Dan Brightwell. I was appalled to think that council would only put us at the top of the agenda for Black History Month, and seeing that we're going to stay there at the top of the agenda, I think that's a great idea. I never pass up the opportunity to say to the city council that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart, and all the decisions that you make, you should keep that in mind. I want to speak to what this young lady said about GFL. I was going to talk about something else, but I think I want to just piggyback on what she said. We had waste management, and we had waste management for many years, and to my knowledge, no one ever came before city council to say that waste management was not picking up the garbage, they were leaving trash on the ground like this young lady alluded to. I never heard that, and I've been around for almost 40 years in this great city of Southfield. The city made a decision to do somewhat what the city of Flint did. They opted to change from the Detroit Water System to something else and using the Flint River, and what happened? For them to save $5 million, what happened? People die, lead in the water, faulty pipes, children are going to be damaged for life. The city of Southfield didn't go that drastic at the time. You made a decision to save a couple million dollars for trash. Now, we know that a lot of this development was built on the wildlife inhabited for the animals, so we're going to have to do a little bit better. You gotta pick up the trash, and you gotta talk to GFL, because my husband and I have driven behind the truck, and when those guys throw it in there, they throw the basket right back. They don't place it in the grass, they throw it back. So if they don't want to do the right thing, throw that contract back, and let's get waste management. Thank you.
Thank you. That will conclude our communications portion for this evening.
Madam Chair, can I just make one correction?
Yes, please.
To Mr. Keeler, the pathway that is going to be built this year goes from Lasher Road to Civic Center, does not go down Lasher Road to Ten Mile.
Okay. Thank you. Again, that concludes our communication portion for this evening. Next, we have a presentation, and we have with us our state representative, Ms. Kyra Harris Bolden.
I am your state, thank you, Mayor. I'm your state representative, Kyra Bolden, and I have the pleasure of representing Michigan's 35th House District, which are the communities of Southfield, Lathrow Village, Beverly Hills, Bangor Farms, and Franklin. And one thing that we wanted to do in this office is to update quarterly all the municipalities that we have, and so this is a part of our quarterly update that I'm so graciously honored to have before you today. So, good evening, Mayor, and Madam Clerk, and to this honorable body. Just a few quick updates. I want to make sure that folks know, well, first of all, please sign up for my newsletter. If you go to hosedems.com/bolden, you can sign up for our newsletter. We send it out every two weeks, and you can stay updated as to what we're doing in the office, but I'm always happy to also appear here. Happy to report that I just received, or just got another bill passed into law. It is, it was House Bill 5062 of 2021, which is now PA 16 of 2022. And so this bill made some changes to our Michigan liquor control code to clarify the definition of redevelopment, to incentivize economic development in our downtown development districts. And so basically, there's ambiguity in the law that said that you can only use the special liquor license to refurbish or rehab an existing building, and so this change would allow for completely new development in our downtown development authority zones. And so I'm really proud of this economic development measure that the city of Southfield will now be able to utilize for our, to attract businesses. What we are working on, in my office, we're trying to bring more attention to the issue of uterine fibroids, which is an issue that has gone pretty much unheard, unnoticed, and per the request of our office, the governor put in $500,000 for fiber education and research into her proposed budget. I'm also working on felony firearm legislation, and it would repeal the two-year mandatory minimum on felony firearm, and give judges more discretion in reviewing cases on a case-by-case basis. We have a few other health care reform bills also going on, and just wanted to let you know, many people have asked me about this, but we finally reintroduced the film incentives to, so that we can bring more economic development to our communities, and hopefully have movies about Motown and Aretha Franklin made right here in Motown. So that was, I got asked that a lot, and so I'm glad that we, our office was able to introduce that. We have an upcoming town hall on taxes, and so we are partnering with the CP, or Michigan CPAs, as well as the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. That will be on March 18th, so please keep an eye out on that. It will be virtual, but as tax season is coming up, I encourage everyone to attend if you have any questions. And please keep an eye out on our monthly coffee hours that we have, and again, please sign up for our newsletter. It's every, usually every third Monday. Sometimes we have to move it for various reasons. And I encourage you to please go to the website. We have a survey on our website, so you can give our office feedback on things that we have been working on. Very fortunate to work very closely with our body here, and so we have your priorities for appropriations for our state, but if any more should arise, please let our office know, so we can try to incorporate those in our supplemental budget or our general budget for next term. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Or I'll entertain any questions. I'm sorry if you have any.
Before you leave?
I'm sorry.
We're so excited to see you here tonight. Thank you for coming. Council, did anyone have any questions for our state reps? Councilman Cruz?
No, I didn't have any questions. I just want to commend our representative on the fine job that she's been doing for the city of Southfield and her entire district. We're very lucky to have someone like you in that space, and so I just thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you for your service. Okay, seeing no other questions, we just want to say thank you again for coming and keeping us updated. And this being Women's History Month, thank you for making history. Passing those bills, bringing the film back.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no appointments. Council, we next have two sets of minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to move that we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 7, 2022, and also the regular meeting minutes of February 14, 2022.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of our regular meeting minutes of February 7 of 2022, and our regular meeting minutes of February 14 of 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we will go into our agenda items for discussion and/or action, and the first item is the Roadmasters Vet Club of Michigan.
I'm taking this item, Madam Chair. You may recall that last year, actually, starting with the Neil de Heale event following the murder of George Floyd, we connect, the police chief and I connected with a group called the Roadmasters Corvette Club, and since then, we've formed a partnership where they have participated in any number of community events, including the high school graduation parades, the Martin Luther King Drive for Justice, virtual, or road, the drive around the cities, and several other, a number of events, including our Domestic Violence Walk. And so last year, they did a blessing of the vets, and as, spring is when all the Corvettes come back out, and they would like to do the same thing, and they're, they're asking permission to use the north parking lot. This is a Saturday morning on April 30th, and so I, the police chief and I are in support of this, and are asking the council for permission pending their proof of liability insurance. And I know that Attorney King has been in contact with the club regarding their insurance.
Thank you. Council, is there any questions?
I, I have a question.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I see that the proceeds we go into the Domestic Violence Task Force, what are the estimated value of those proceeds?
Say that again?
It states here, proceeds from the event will be donated to the Southfield.
They, they do charge an admission for people that Corvette owners to participate. They, they have prizes and so on, and a raffle, so they give away any proceeds they would support our Domestic Violence Task Force.
Well, what's the value of those? This event was last year?
You know, I can't answer that. It depends on the level of participation, so I don't know what, I couldn't give you a dollar amount, Councilman.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any other question? Okay, so we're seeking approval, Council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of the Roadmasters Vet Club's second annual blessing of the vet to use the north Civic Center parking lot on Saturday, April 30th, 2022, from 9:00 to 2:00, pending approval of their insurance.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the annual blessing of the vet event as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Medical Marijuana Facility License. Attitude Wellness LLC doing business as Loom Cannabis Company.
Good evening, Madam President and honorable body. Tonight, we have the Medical Marijuana Facility Request Application. Before us, our, this was previously approved several months ago, and this is just the internal process that we have here, which includes, our internal process includes being approved by our fire chief, and also our police chief, and them getting a certificate of occupancy. All of those things have happened, and this has priorly been approved through the zoning and planning structure of the city, so we are requesting the consideration of approving their medical marijuana facility license this evening. We do have a representative here, if this honorable body had additional questions for them at this time, and just keep in mind, this is for the medical marijuana facility license request. Thank you. And I'll entertain any questions that they may have for our process here in the city.
Okay. Did anyone, the representative want to come up and speak and tell us anything, or, either one, it doesn't matter, wherever you're most comfortable?
Thank you, Madam Chair and council members. I'm Michael Dowdell. I grew up here in Southfield. My, my parents still live here. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the company, if you like, and I'm open to answer any questions that you might have. So first off, I work for Loom Cannabis. Been with the company for about two years. Prior to Loom, I worked for Bose Corporation, the speakers and electronics company, and helped them open stores, and I've been doing the same thing for Loom. Loom is now the largest retail operator in the state of Michigan. We have 30 stores operational that are adult use. Half of those are adult use as well as medical use. The company grew when I started from five employees in 2019, and we're now over 1,000. We had five employees in 2019, and we crossed 1,000 employees in the end of 2021. Some members of our executive team come from all over the country. We've got executives from Domino's, JP Morgan, Bose, myself, Hertz, Myers, New Balance, Dykema, Warrior Sports, Jimmy John's, and Bell Tires. Our ownership team are the co-owners of Bell Tire and the founder of Warrior Sports. Most of our stores have security guards on property and on-site. I know there's often questions about that, so we offer seven days of security in most stores. Some of our stores in more remote areas do not have security, but that's more by choice. We're not required to do it, but we do have security available in stores. Some stores have as many as two. We offer customers several ways to pay. They can order their products online and pick it up at the store. They can come into the store, and we also offer delivery services in the stores that make it available for customers. Loom does provide a unique customer experience. If you've ever had an opportunity to visit a store, it's not a stereotypical cannabis company. We provide a first-class experience where customers are greeted, they have the opportunity to shop however they like, and our employees carry a laptop or an iPad to help the customers order their product, and then it's given to them, and it's taken out of the store in a sealed bag. You know, we're not a stereotypical cannabis brand. We're focused on a best-in-class experience, and you know, we're very excited to open the store in Southfield. It will be our 31st location, and we have two other locations opening this month. One of the things that I'm personally most proud of is not that we are just opening stores, but we're providing careers and futures for people. We've got several employees that started with us in 2019 as maybe a part-timer or a salesperson that have moved their way through the ranks to store manager, district manager, our head of training. our head of training, all started off in a retail store. And because of our growth, we're able to provide livelihoods and careers for people, and that's something that we're excited to continue here in Southfield. So, thank you for this time, and we'd love to answer any questions. I do have some other members of my team. If there's anything that I can't answer, I may reference one of them. So we've got an attorney, we've got an architect, and we've got a construction manager, as well as some people from our sales team. So, what questions, if anything, can I answer for you guys?
Okay, thank you so much. I'll ask the counsel. Councilman Brightwell?
So the average salesperson, they make a $15 per hour base salary is the starting wage. We do offer some people more depending on their level of experience. And each store does get tips, so just like at a restaurant, and there's a tip-out pool. So on average, the average employee makes an additional $0.25 an hour in tips, which we do declare and we make sure it's on their statement. So we do make them turn them in, so they are taxed on it. But that's just for the average salesperson. You know, members of management make a typical, slightly above-average, you know, salary. Well, I mean, in terms of, we have a market reference brand. So you, you know, you take the average store manager, you know, from 50 different stores, and we like to be like a little bit over the middle. So if the average is, if $50,000, then we might be 52, depending on the market.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I just have one quick question. Do you, do you have a option for people to call in or order online and a drive-through type scenario or no?
Yeah, that's a good question. So drive-throughs are not legal, not legal. But what we do allow them to do is we have a curbside order. So the Southfield store actually has an awning. So if it's raining, for example, you can order it online. Currently, you can't purchase online. You still have to come to the store. So you have to come to the store, still exchange your credit card at the store. We're working on an online option, but we don't have it yet. But you don't have to get out of your car, and we have an awning that will fit four cars? Four cars at a time. So depending on how busy the store is, if those people don't want to get out of the car, they never have to. But then we have parking spaces for people who choose to come inside the store.
Gotcha.
It's a good question. Yeah, but drive-through, you know, we're hearing that there are other parts of the state where they're trying to do it, or maybe it's some of the tribes that have a different set of rules. So I believe there is one or two in the state that have drive-through, but it's currently not approved by the MRA, the Marijuana Regulation Authority.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
What are your hours of operation?
Our standard hours are nine to nine, but whatever, I believe in this case, it could be 10 to nine, and I think we're going to close at 6:00 on Saturday because that's what's in the ordinance. So we follow, you know, the, whatever the rules are. So across the state, they're different. Some, during the summer, most stores are open 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Some stores stay open until 10:00 p.m. during the summer, or just through Thursday, Friday, and Saturday in the summer. Cannabis is different than typical retail. Typical retail, November and December are the busiest months, but cannabis, actually, the summer months are busier months. December and January are very slow.
And just for everyone who's watching and in the audience, this is medical marijuana only?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to verify that.
Yeah, we opened several stores at medical only initially in 2019, and many of them converted later. But this is a medical license for purposes, but obviously, we know how to run both.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
We received an email from a gentleman who was unable to attend during the public comment. And I tried to answer his question, what we were doing this evening regarding the license. And he asked if I could please read his comments into the record. So is it appropriate to do it now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. "Good evening, members of the Southfield City Council. I probably won't be able to make it tonight, to tonight's city council meeting, in time for the public comment at 6:00 p.m. So I'm emailing you the comments I prepared for the meeting. I call on the council to not approve the medical marijuana license request for Lumina Cannabis Company located at 26760 Lhasa Road. As a lifelong resident of Southfield and someone looking at potentially buying a home within the city, I'm angered and disheartened to see the city is no longer just a great place to work, play, and live, but now is also a destination for getting stoned. All it takes is a Google search to find all the negative impacts that marijuana legalization has had on the state of Colorado. You'll have to forgive me, as I don't remember if Southfield residents approved the sale of marijuana in the community through a vote or if this body approved it, but either way, I can't think of any upside to this decision other than the money generated from taxes and the marijuana licenses. Southfield is a great city with incredibly potent, incredible potential for its proximity to several highways, fiber optic internet infrastructure, Lawrence Tuck University, and more. We don't need money from pot, and while I can't bring back Sunrise Donuts and I can't undo the city's decision to let in the sale of marijuana, I do ask you to consider whether a pot shop at this location will really lead to a stronger Southfield." Thank you, Evan Carter. This was sent to all of council. I did inform him that we originally had approved this for medical marijuana, not recreational, and this was for the licensing portion only, just so council is aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, if you could, could you just go over, as much as you can, the security you have around your, around the building, some of the processes that you have to do, I mean, even just from a person walking into the building, being able to go through the whole process. I know one of the concerns that comes up is issues with crime at a lot of these facilities, and so I just want to kind of address some, what are some of the things that you guys do to address that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question. And what I can share with you and for everyone else is, with 33 stores, we've never had an arrest. We've never been broken into. We've never had to arrest an employee for doing anything. One of the things that, that we want the public to understand is cannabis is highly regulated. This is, and at least as far as our businesses, we go over and above. We have a partnership with Guardian Alarm. There's a camera that, there are cameras in every room that covers every inch of every room. So if anyone even thought that they would steal something, they're on camera at all times. Part of the inspection process, and this is not an exaggeration, a representative from the MRA, like I've been there, and they said, "Okay, Mike, I want you to go stand in the corner and lay down, and if I can't see you, then I can't approve you." So we have camera coverage for every inch inside the store, as well as the perimeter of the store. So if, if anyone chose to steal anything or to do anything, we've got them on camera the whole time. So in addition to that, we have two security guards. Typically, one security guard is walking around the building periodically, and there's one on the inside. And as I said before, some of our area, some of our other stores that have a lower crime index, maybe there's one security guard, and some don't have any at all. Again, we've got more stores than anyone, and we've never had an issue.
Through the chair?
Yes.
This is Planner Crood. If you may recall, part of the special land use approval is they have to have sign-off on like a 33-point security plan with our police department. So that's also part of the review process.
And I have one, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. So you got, you have 33 stores, you said?
This, well, we're opening our 33rd by the end of this month. We have 30 open. This will be 31, and we have two more opening this month.
Yeah, and I'm just, do you guys have thoughts about, I don't know, like market saturation? I just, like, just with any business, I don't know if there's concerns for you about as more and more of these types of businesses are opening, if it's, you know, just the viability of it going forward?
No, that's a good question. And, you know, what we do have is the guidebook by what's happened in other states. So it started off in Washington, in Colorado, in those markets. And what ends up happening is you, you get a lot of people get into the business, and then ultimately, many of them do well, and then many of them, you know, are acquired, and that's part of almost any business. That's what happened to the automobiles. It wasn't three companies 70 years ago. It was like 12, right, in the U.S.? It was a lot. So, you know, we're monitoring that. We're aware of that. We're not heavily concentrated. In fact, this would be only our second store in Oakland County. The majority of our stores are throughout the state. We've got eight stores in the U.P. We've got a lot of stores in the northern part of, of lower Michigan. So we're not at all concerned about saturation. We're very confident that there's enough, you know, business for us to be able to continue.
Yeah, I mean, it's just your start. I mean, there are obviously other stores also in Oakland County that are, are like up and running too. And those, I mean, I'm thinking about all your competitors as well, when I'm thinking about the market saturate, market saturation too.
Yeah, there's, I mean, we, we run a profit and loss statement. We know what it takes to make a store successful, and we're not in the business to lose money. So we, we try to be very strategic about where we open stores, and, and it's worked out pretty good so far. But again, we're not overly saturated. This will only be our second store in Oakland County. We have one in Wald Lake, and that's it currently.
Okay, all right. That's all the questions I have.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yep, just one, one last question.
Yes, sir.
Because Councilman Hoskins brought it up. Security, are they armed or no?
We have both. We have armed and unarmed. It's a choice. So we can, we have a third-party security company that we use. We have several different ones. So it's our choice of armed versus unarmed. In some cases, customers don't like for the guards to be armed. So in some cases, we'll, you know, we'll go with unarmed, but it's, it's a personal preference, depending on the crime index, depending on the customer feedback and, but I can tell you, most guards, even if they're unarmed, they prob, you know, they may still have, if they have one on their ankle. We're not paying for it, but I can't, you know, I can't speak to that. We, we pay. There's a different rate, obviously, if you pay for an armed guard versus an unarmed guard. But I, I would say 50% of our stores don't need, don't need guards because of what I mentioned before about the cameras. And most, even the bad guys know that there's cameras everywhere, which is why you don't see a lot of cannabis robberies, because they'll get caught.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No other questions? Counsel, want to entertain a motion?
Any other questions for me, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
Am I, any other questions for me?
No, you can be seated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of the medical marijuana facility license at 26760 Lhasa Road.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the medical marijuana facility license for Attitude Wellness LLC, doing business as Loom Cannabis Company at 26760 Lhasa Road, Southfield, Michigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have our liquor license request for Family Dollar Stores of Michigan LLC, store number 21296.
Good evening, Madam President and Honorable Body. Again, this is a liquor license request for the store 21296 on 20570 Eight Mile Road. It is a Class C liquor license for beer and wine for Family Dollar. Again, this has already been approved through the state of Michigan, and they have went through our internal process and has, and they have abided by all of the internal operations that we do request here within the city. Recently, with everything going on, there has been slight, a slight delay in some of our applications that were submitted to the state, but this was done relatively quickly, and that generally goes to the paperwork being done correctly by the petitioner. So that was done. And right now, this is just for council's consideration to approve this liquor license request, which again, is for beer and wine for Family Dollar. And there was a question earlier today of how many other Family Dollars within the state of Michigan that does have this beer and wine licensing. And it's roughly going to be around, around 70 of those locations. So I'll entertain any questions that the council may have regarding the petitioner. And then we do have individuals from Family Dollar Stores that's also here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Councilwoman Banks?
Do we have any Family Dollar Stores in Southfield that presently have a license? This would be the first one. I don't know if this council remembers, but I'm going to say several years ago, but it could have been five or six or seven years ago. Thought there was a Family Dollar Store that came before us, and it was around the Southfield-Greenfield area, and they were also trying to seek approval. Does anyone remember this discussion? And I thought at the time, we, council had said they didn't want Family Dollar Stores to sell beer and wine. Does this sound familiar to anyone? Okay. Okay, I, I can't remember the discussion regarding this, but I have no further questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm just to add.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just to add to Councilwoman Banks, there was some discussion several years ago about this. Before the grab-and-go model kind of took precedence, now you go into a Target and you can see beer and wine and things like that. Before, that wasn't such, that wasn't a marketplace for that, but now it's the same marketplace, and we have to, if these companies adhere to the state guidelines, unless we tighten some of our guidelines here and reanalyze how the liquor license requests go, but remember, they are by population through the state of Michigan. So in doing that, if we were to tighten the guidelines, we would have to look at all the other stores, such as a Target and other stores, a Dollar General and things of that. There may be something to talk about further down the line, but this petitioner has done everything they were supposed to do for the store for consideration, store number 21296.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other questions?
Madam President? Not a question necessarily, but I do have some reservation about this myself. And the reason, the only reason why I think is, in my mind, it seems like it's opening the door for the next request is going to be for gas stations to come in and want to sell liquor or beer, wine, and so on and so forth, which I'm opposed to as well. And, I mean, I, I don't know. I guess I would like to hear, you know, what, what the, the mission or goal is of Family Dollar in general. I mean, does this fit into your, you know, your value statements and such, sir? If you could maybe just share some with me?
Yeah, thank you. That's an excellent question. This is Jonathan Crumley for Family Dollar. And just so you know, the Family Dollar is, cannot be classified even close to a gas station. It's a, it's a small retail grocery store. And so it is much more comparable to a Target or a Dollar General. There, in fact, of the approximately 4,000 Family Dollars nationwide, not a single gas tank is in any store. It is part of the corporate move for Family Dollar to remain competitive. Dollar General has been obtaining off-premises sales license for their locations for the past eight years. So Family Dollar is a little bit behind the curve in that competitive cycle, but they've made it a corporate policy that they would like to make this offering available to their customers. We have done this for many years now, and just so you're aware, you know, the, the company takes enforcement of all regulations very seriously at all their stores, and we're in many different locations. And as you know, with alcohol, the, the local jurisdiction is sort of the boots on the ground, the closest one, and those can vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. But nationwide, Family Dollar, over the last three years from 19, excuse me, 2019 through the end of the year 2021, so two years, we've got a violation rate of less than 5/100ths of a percent, .005% nationwide. We do very robust training of all personnel that are engaged in a store that gets permitted, both for the national standards of checking IDs, the rights to refuse sale to anybody that appears intoxicated. Those are very common across the board. We also do specific training. We would, we would train the folks here in Southfield for these, anything unique to Southfield's ordinances for these personnel.
Okay, and I, and I do believe the clerk said that it would just be beer and wine?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I don't know. I still feel a little trouble with it in my mind. I guess because, I guess because your name is Family. Kind of throws me off a little bit, but nonetheless.
I understand. I was on a plane from Atlanta this morning, the buckle of the Bible Belt, so it does seem a little dissonant to some folks. a little dissonant to some folks, but there's a wide range of opinions about what to enjoy at a family gathering.
Yeah, I understand. And then, I guess, the only other thing, just for council to consider, I guess, in my mind, is this, you know, the competition it's going to create for stores that are just open to sell beer and wine and liquor, what that takes away from them if we open this up, because you guys are such a larger entity. It kind of just changes the dynamic, but, you know, that's, I guess, that's the competition in the marketplace, right? And it's nothing, nothing necessarily we can do about that. So, that's all I had to say. I was just, you know, like I said, I've mulling, I've been mulling it in my head and over the last couple of days, so, but thank you for sharing.
Appreciate your input.
For information purposes for the council as well, just keep in mind, we have an ordinance on the books that bans alcohol sales for gas stations. So, if the city was going, if this council was going to move toward that for other venues or companies such as this, they would have to pass an ordinance specifically for that and then enact that ordinance. So, specifically on the books, everyone knows that we can't have liquor at gas stations because we have an ordinance that prevents that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Brightwell?
What is the gross revenue for Family Dollar, approximate dollar value?
Nationwide or the Southfield one?
I can't hear.
Sorry, Nationwide or the Southfield?
Nationwide.
I am, I do not know, just for grocery sales or total sales?
Total sales. Well, what, you have it for Southfield?
I do not, that's what I was trying to ask. I don't have actually either of those numbers. I wanted to clarify so that I could get them to you from, I'm just a consultant that they retained to work through the alcohol licensing process, but I've followed up with multiple jurisdictions with questions like that.
Okay, no, what I'm getting at is that, I'm clearly that, you know, I know how decisions are made. So, what do they anticipate the dollar value of the revenue from liquor, beer and liquor sales?
I do not know specifically. I do know from talking to multiple members of their senior executive staff, the C-suite and senior vice presidents, that with every store that adds beer and wine, and no store across the nation has ever saw spirit sales, it's all beer and wine, but beer and wine tends to increase sales anywhere from ten to twenty percent in top-line revenue, depending on, on the location.
Okay, well, you partially answered what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No other questions?
Councilwoman Brightwell, it's an end-of-the-year report that the state provides of all sales of beer, wine, and alcohol for each individual that has a liquor license in the state of Michigan. So, that's something that we could see at the end of each calendar year. If you wanted to see business by business, what their percentages of, of totality of beer, wine, and/or liquor.
Okay.
To be clear, that ten to twenty percent, that's actually a global increase, because there's an effect when people come and buy and maybe throw a six-pack in, they will then wander and buy more things. So, that's, that's just a, it's an overall increase per store, not just related to pure alcohol sales.
Sure, sure. I was just, I was trying to get a correlation, but then I'm just trying to figure what drove this decision.
Correct.
To put this into your market basket, so to speak. Okay, all right, thank you.
Counsel?
Yeah, I'd like to entertain them. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Banks? How, on Eight Mile Road, like, how far are you from Arts Party Store? Are you, are you near them?
I do not know. I was on a plane coming from Atlanta this morning. I'm happy to try to figure that out and get that information to you. I do not work at the local store.
Terry, would you be able to answer that?
I'm sorry, I was trying to look up something regarding the, the big box stores. Could you repeat that question, please?
Nancy? I'm sorry, and I'm having problems with my iPad. Approximately where is this locate, where is this location at? Is it near Arts Party Store? Or how far is it near Arts Party Store? I was trying to figure with the address, but...
Yeah, I don't have the address either. I'm not...
They're four miles away.
I can give you the address. It's 20648 Mile Road.
According to Google Maps, they're about, it's four miles away.
So, closer to like Greenfield or Telegraph? I'm just trying to visualize where this store is located.
Closer to Telegraph.
Thank you.
I can add that we had a broader discussion about small box retails and we limited the number of those within our city. That was something that we discussed within the last year or so.
Yeah.
But I don't recall specifically any discussion on, on beer or wine sales. And I do confirm that we do not allow that with our gas stations.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any others? Okay, can we entertain a motion?
Entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this particular request.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Bright, Mandelbaum, to approve the SDM liquor license request for Family Dollar Stores of Michigan LLC, store number 21296, located at 20570 West Eight Mile Road in Southfield, Michigan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have the authorization to contract for construction of vector dump.
Good evening, Honorable Body. A.J. Jensen with DPW Superintendent. We are seeking authorization for a dump, vector dump-off. Basically, what it is, is when we are jetting and cleaning the system, we incur debris and we would take that debris to the yard and dump it off and decant it and then load it up and put it into a container. Currently, we go up to Waterford slash Pontiac and that takes time, energy, resources, breaks up the crew, breaks up the time of day, and that costs, costs a little bit of money to do that. We also would like to charge Oakland County to come in, because of course, they're down the street from us, to, to come in and we can now charge them, because it's costing them money to break up their crews and send them up to Pontiac and into Waterford. The, this was done with a competitive bid. We had two people apply. The total cost is three seventy-four, eight twenty-nine. There's oversight costs in there for OHM for engineering and a ten percent contingency. The return on investment, with just some basic numbers, is very good. If anyone has any, any part of the, Honorable Body has any questions?
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
It says here, to save time and money. How much time and our money is to be saved if we go through this purchase here?
It's a good question. So, I put together some basic numbers. It takes two people to operate the vehicle, forty-five minutes up, forty-five minutes back, half hour to dump, with a one-hour person for supervision and the vector itself and the cost of the dumping comes to roughly thirteen hundred dollars. It's a little bit less, twelve seventy-one per trip. We have three vectors in the yard, two are for water and one is for storm. Depending on how many trips are made per week, if we do, just from the month of April to November, because we don't run, we try not to run the vectors because they freeze up and break in the wintertime, even if we did fifteen of the thirty-three weeks, we would be at fifty-seven thousand dollars and some change. And if we were doing upwards of thirty-three times, we would be close to six hundred thousand dollars. So, the number varies greatly. It, the ROI on this is, I feel is very good, but it keeps continuity of our workforce going when we only have a ten-minute trip now back to the yard to dump off.
Okay.
I have some basic numbers here if you'd like to look at them.
No, that's, I take your word for what you, what you calculated there. When I was reading this, it clearly, the dollar value pops up, but is there an environmental issue here, whereas before, we took it to Waterford to be disposed of? Whatever you pull out, it would be disposed of by the county, is that correct?
Yes, yes. They normally would take care of it. What would happen here, it's, many communities have done this or do currently do it. It, when we bring it back to the yard, we dump it into a large cast-in-place concrete structure and that decanters off all, of all the liquids, leaving all the solids. The solids are then scooped up and put into a roll-off container and that itself is hauled away.
Okay, so, this does not create an environment issue for our local location?
No.
Do you tell me that when you, you vac it out and you dump it, all the liquid flow off and go where? Where, where does the liquid go?
The liquid, actually, we, we spent time and money and energy running a water line and a sewer line. So, we're going to be introducing, we're going to be taking it, obviously, in the vector, back to our yard. We're going to decant it into our own sewer, because we're not worried about the liquids. We're going to put it back into the sewer system that runs down Claire Lane, that's, that's already in place. It's the solids that, that's where we get, incur cost with Oakland County when we dump.
Okay, so, this, this evens out to, it is financially beneficial and, let's say, productivity beneficial to the city of Southfield. You quantify the financials, so, just by not making that trip, there's certain degrees of productivity, well, it, it's a win-win for the city, that's what you're saying?
Yes, it's a win-win. The cost, the return on investment, number one. Number two, the production, like you're talking about, we stay within the city, it's just a ten-minute trip. And three, now we get to charge Oakland County, because they, them, they themselves have to take it up to Waterford. So, we're, we're going to solicit them and if they're open to the idea to come over to us and decant it right in our yard, so that now we can charge them.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, no other questions, council? Can we entertain a motion?
Councilwoman Banks, that council does hereby authorize construction of a vector dump at the Public Works Building and awards a contract to the qualified low-bid bidder Warren Contractors in Development of Shelby Township, Michigan.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval to authorize the contract for construction of the vector dump. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Honorable Body. Thank you.
Next, we have the presentation and discussion regarding creating a residential unit development district with development agreement for the John Grace School located at 21030 Indian Street, Sidwell Parcel 2431-376-033.
Good evening. If council may recall that in May 2019, you did adopt residential unit development district to help promote adaptive reuse and preservation of about ten to twelve former school sites or underutilized school sites. This is the tool that is being requested for the adaptive reuse of the former John Grace School. It's also, one of the intents was to encourage innovation in land use planning, providing enhanced housing and create some open space and benefits to the neighborhood. As you correctly stated, this project is located at 21030 Indian Street, on the east side of Indian Street, between Chiawassee and West Eight Mile Road. And the request is to use the residential unit development district overlay tool to allow for the adaptive reuse of the existing John Grace School for senior housing and to construct a new building with additional senior housing units, plus a variety of recreation, social, and community-oriented activities. This is the aerial of the current site with the current playground. The site is zoned R1. It also has a recreation-conservation overlay, but when the council adopted the RUDD, this site was determined as an eligible site with a minimum of three point seven five acres required. With that, I'd like to invite John Elbow up to give a presentation of the specifics of the, the project and I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have after that.
My name is John Abella. I'm, that's okay. My name is John Abella and I'm with SDG Associates. We have the architectural record for this project. Along with me tonight, I have my colleague, Janay Eisenmeger from Lockwood Group. The John Grace Arms is a project that not only proposes to adaptively reuse a structure built in 1921, sorry, I'm trying to get the slides to go forward, not only to reuse a structure built in 1921, but also serve as an ever-growing need for the affordable senior housing. Per the AARP, when it comes to the future needs of our nation's housing, it's severely deficient. By 2030, one in every five Americans will be over the age of sixty-five and our nation will face a severe shortage in accessible and affordable housing to meet their needs. For the 2019 U.S. Census Bureau, the American Community Survey, there were fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five persons sixty-five years or older residing in the city of Southfield. Twenty-four point four percent of Southfield's total population are individuals sixty-five and older. Of those seniors, thirty-six percent live alone. That's of 2019. And the poverty rate for persons over sixty-five was fifteen percent. Currently, Lockwood Management, pardon me, currently Lockwood Management manages over five hundred senior apartments in the city of Southfield that are set aside for senior households earning no more than sixty percent of the area median income. There is a two-year waitlist for seniors desiring safe and affordable housing. And the Southfield Housing Commission has estimated there are fifteen hundred households on that waitlist currently. The John Grace Arms will consist of fifty-one one-bedroom and nine two-bedroom apartments. The apartments will be reserved for seniors earning sixty percent or less of the area median income. A significant percentage of seniors who are fifty-five and older contribute to the workforce. Nearly half the residents of John Grace Arms are estimated to be actively employed. Beaumont Hospital's Farmington Campus is actively recruiting, as well as other large employers, such as Superior Industries, KS International, Chassix, Arcadia, GST, Tyson Krupp, Creed, Denso, and International Automotive Components Group. The John Grace Arms will provide safe and affordable housing by adaptively reusing the existing structures on the site and by adding a new building that respects the character of the existing historic John Grace School and neighborhood. As you can see from the slide, the, the existing portion of the building is in light gray and the addition, that U-shaped piece is in the dark gray. Our attempt was to not only respect the school, but also respect the neighborhood by keeping the scale of the building, I guess they're out of order, to not only respect the scale of, of the building, but also create a nice green space as well, including, including the public park. The project will have about six... The project will have about 60, excuse me. The project as proposed will have 60 residents, seven of which will be barrier-free. There'll be 51 single units and nine double units. There will be an internal courtyard that you can see on the slide, with walking paths, benches, and a pavilion. We're able to park 62 spaces on the property, eight of which will be barrier-free. We will have professionally landscaped grounds. We propose having public art, and something will work with the Southfield Historical Society and the neighbors, potentially doing a workshop to get all parties involved. There will be a public park, which is something that the revitalization plan will, we will follow the city of Southfield's revitalization plan for this entity. We plan on including ADA, accessible circular walking paths, benches, trash receptacles, a tot lot, open green space, and small shade structures and trees. Many of the features of the existing school building will be maintained and preserved, such as lockers, display cabinets, the library, clocks, and some chalkboards. The amenities within the building. We will have 100% visitable units, and what that means is there'll be no step entries. There'll be barrier-free parking, barrier-free entry doors, barrier-free bathrooms, and electrical switches at reachable heights. And there'll be an accessible route through the first floor of every living space. We plan on having a game and activities room, a library, a laundry facility, in addition to the individual washers and dryers within the units, a community room, which can be opened to the public on a reservation and availability, barrier-free restrooms, and a small non-commercial kitchen within that community space. We've also communicated with SMART to offer services to the building, and as such, we have included, if you look on the site plan, there are two areas. I don't see, is there a pointer? At the back of the building, you see where the striped areas, sorry, do you see where the striped areas where that circular loading zone is? There is a bus shelter located there, and there's also another drop-off zone on the south side of the building adjacent to the barrier-free parking. The intent is to take the existing school and make it purposeful again. And then the addition again will complement the existing school and also serve a great need within the city of Southfield. We plan on having single units, double units, and also barrier-free layouts for both the single and the double units. We really did an extensive study on how to best proportion the building. The thing we didn't want to do was take away from the existing John Grace Schools. We made our building a little more compressed than the existing school. We plan on using the same materials, which are brick and stone. And we are also providing other types of amenities, a covered southern entrance. There's the bus shelter that I spoke of. And we also plan on having a courtyard pavilion. And then here are some 3D perspectives of what we propose the building to look like. Again, our intent is to complement the existing structure. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
If I could for the council, tonight's discussion only. Next week will be the public hearing, where hopefully you will introduce and approve the plan. And then we're looking for enactment on the 21st. There's also a revitalization plan that you will be seeing next week as well that looks at the bigger public improvements within the neighborhood to complement this specific project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions in addition to John. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I think this, you know, this this plan is, it looks great. You're taking one of the older schools and turning, you know, rehabbing it into senior apartments, which I can tell you, knowing the ins and outs of McDonald Tower and River Park Place, senior apartments are desperately needed in Southfield. I do like the fact that, from what I can tell, you're matching the new building to the existing building. Is that accurate with the brick?
We are complimenting. This brick is very similar to the existing brick that's on the existing John Grace Building. Our plan is to complement with this brick. So it doesn't match exactly, but it's close.
Okay. And there's a, I know that we've heard some comments. There's a park that's in the, on the property. That will, that's going to still be open to the public. That's not going to be fenced in only for the residents, will it?
No, that is a public park.
Okay. And then we're also adding sidewalks to the area, is that correct?
Correct. We're adding sidewalks on Indian Street. We're also providing parking on Indian Street as well.
Okay.
If I could through the chair, Mr. Mandelbaum. The project itself, the property limits, they'll be responsible for adding the sidewalk. As we come back to you with the revitalization plan and at a future budget, this is a two- or three-year project, then we would be coming to the city to look at installing sidewalks from Eight Mile to Chiawassee as part of bigger capital improvement plan.
Okay. Because aren't we doing, I think we're going to talk about it afterward. We're doing work around the Chiawassee.
That's correct. And we'll be presenting the, all the capital projects that are currently funded and future next week as part of the larger neighborhood plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I know you gave some demographics, national front, but has there been a market study for this particular location?
Will I defer to my colleague, Janay Eisenmeger, from the Lockwood Group to answer that question? If it pleases the Chair.
Good evening. I'm Janay Eisenmeger with Lockwood Management Company. And the Michigan State Housing Development Authority has commissioned a market study, and it should be available within the next couple of weeks. We, at the very onset of the meeting, had a discussion with their chief market analyst, David Allen, to discuss the project, and he was very supportive of the need for additional senior housing within the city.
Okay.
If I could, do you want to talk a little bit about the overburden?
Oh, correct. In exploring this area, and will also be contained in the Mishta, sorry, Mishta, Michigan State Housing Development Authority's market study, that nearly 33% of the existing residents that reside in the John Grace neighborhood, that reside in Census tract 1625, they experience a 33% housing overburden, which means they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs, which could include a mortgage, rent, insurance, taxes. So there is, you know, 30% of the households within that Census tract already have a significantly high cost overburden attributed to where they currently reside.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks? How many one-bedroom and two-bedroom units did you say there were?
Hi. We have 51 single units and nine double units.
So there'll be a total of 60 units?
Correct. Within the, within the new portion in this, in this, within the new portion, we will have 35 single units and five double units. And in the existing building, we will have 14 singles and four double units.
Okay, and then the process to rent these units will be, what is the process for an individual who's interested in renting a unit?
Correct. We will probably form a website. We will also be submitting to the State Housing Authority a firm and affair housing marketing plan for their review, which will give us guidelines for our marketing and leasing activities as well. We also plan to use the two-year waitlist that currently is in place for senior tenants who want to occupy units at Woodridge, McDonald Tower, and River Park Place. We'd like to address the waitlist as well and include that in our leasing and marketing proposal as well.
One thing I'd like to see with this project, I think Southfield residents should be given first priority. And I know there is a large waitlist at McDonald Tower and River Park, but a lot of those people are not Southfield residents.
Well, I have to adhere to, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority requires that we adhere to a fair housing marketing plan, and we will do our very best to outreach to the city of Southfield residents.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
So I just want to remind the council that this will be back next Monday for a public hearing. And then hopefully, if you concur, you will approve and introduce an ordinance. And then on the 21st, we'd be looking for enactment. I believe they have an April 1st grant deadline. And you also will be seeing the revitalization plan on the 14th, and then on the 21st for your consideration for approval.
One more question.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Will there be a manager on-site in both of the buildings?
Yes, the, well, one manager. We'll have one full-time property manager, one full-time maintenance personnel, and one full-time janitor. So there'll be three full-time employees.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next, we have Tamarack Creek Stream Restoration Project, Nolan Ten Mile Road Development LLC Agreement Extension.
Good evening, Madam President and your honorable body. I'm Brandy Zalodick. I'm the City Stormwater Manager. And this item's pretty simple. We are mostly done with this Tamarack Creek Stream project, but we do need to finish up some work this summer. So we are asking for an extension of the agreement we have with the Nolan property, which a majority of the work is taking place with, on their property. And we were asking for the extension to go through the end of August. It doesn't change any of the costs associated with the project or any of the work that's going, that is, will be done. So it's just a simple extension.
Counsel, any questions? Can we entertain a motion?
I move to approve the extension for the Tamarack Creek Stream Restoration Project.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of the agreement extension for Tamarack Creek Stream Restoration Project as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the authorization for additional funds for engineering contractual and professional services.
Good evening.
Hi.
Evening.
The engineering budget for contractual and professional services are used for engineering assistance to conduct mandatory M.D. bridge inspections. We use our engineering consultants and this line item to assist with plan reviews and our capital planning efforts for roads and utilities. And we have found ourselves short of this budget year because of a lot of work we've been doing. And some of it is a matter of timing, like with the Northland Development that has been going through very many reviews and traffic studies. So there was an income on the revenue side from that review fee, but we should have, in turn, then used a higher budget number for our expenditures account. So what we're asking for this evening is funds totaling $150,000 be added to this contractual and professional services account in the engineering department. And this comes with a corresponding increase in the use of fund balance.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
I definitely appreciate the, you know, all the work, how the funds were used. How, and I can see where there are additional funds that are needed. How was the $150,000 derived? Did you have some calculus or some, how was this number derived?
So we started with some outstanding invoices that we have, that we don't have sufficient funds to pay. And then we looked at an average of what those invoices are monthly, and said, okay, to get us from now until June 30th, this is what we estimate it to be. We were a little generous. We just don't want to have to come back, so hopefully we're not spending $150,000 more. But that seemed like it was a safe number based on our monthly averages plus outstanding invoices.
Okay, I'm glad to hear you had a system. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel?
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize the additional funds for the engineering contractual and professional as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of the additional funds for engineering contractual and professional services as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Next, we have the approval of agreement for rehabilitation of the Chiawassee Road from Inkster Road to Eight Mile Road.
Yes, the Michigan Department of Transportation has presented the contract documents for this road rehabilitation project. If you reference the map and are familiar with the area, the road is pretty different on east of Beach Road and west of Beach Road. So I'll kind of speak to those separately. So west of Beach Roads, between Inkster and Beach on Chiawassee, that existing asphalt pavement is going to be pulverized. And then we get two new layers of asphalt. This is considered a heavy rehabilitation type of pavement fix. That segment of the project also includes a continuous eight-foot-wide asphalt pathway on the south side of Chiawassee. And then east of Beach Road, that's an existing concrete road. It's not in too bad of shape, so we're just going in there and doing select concrete slab replacement. There is already an existing five-foot sidewalk on the north side, except a short 260-foot gap right near Eight Mile Road. So we are going to fill that sidewalk gap with a five-foot concrete sidewalk. I did want to review the traffic impact. Chiawassee is going to be fully closed at Inkster Road. So that portion west of Beach Road is only going to have local traffic, and everyone will access from Beach Road. East of Beach Road, it's going to be eastbound only, one lane eastbound only for the entire duration of the project. We'll just move them from one side of the road to the other as we proceed with the concrete slab repairs. This estimated construction cost is approximately $2.3 million. We're receiving nearly $1.1 million in federal funds. And with 25% contingencies in construction engineering, Southfield's estimated share is $1,810,137. What we're asking City Council this evening is to approve the project by adopting this resolution, which authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the M.D. agreement on behalf of the city, and then provides the sufficient funding from the Road Bound Construction Fund.
Counsel, are there any questions?
It's nice to see we're continuing construction.
Yes.
Mayor Cyver?
When we just, we talked last week, I had asked you about the trees. Any word on that, or?
So a little progress on that. There are significant tree removals that will be a part of the project. The majority of them are due to the eight-foot asphalt pathway that we're installing on the south side of the road. There are a couple that we're looking at to reevaluate and try to see if they can be saved. We have a spot over by Kinlock where we've got two large trees right across the street from one another. It creates a little bit of a pinch point. I've asked the consultants to take a look if we can remove one, if we can still keep the other, and get our paved lanes in with our one-foot paved shoulders.
I know you did a great job saving trees when Evergreen, between 12 and 13, was done. And I think that's part of the character of Chiawassee. And I think that's part of the character of Chiawasi, the way it bends and then, um, the trees over the road. Uh, I also understand the safety, uh, and the, the trees I'm particularly concerned about are on the north side.
Okay.
But whatever you can do, Lee.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we want to entertain a motion?
Yep, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move the approval of the agreement for rehabilitation of Chiawasi Road from Inkster to Eight Mile Road.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the agreement for the rehabilitation of Chiawasi Road from Inkster to Eight Mile as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next, we have the street lighting improvements.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
Incidentally, as you travel west on Eight Mile, it's Arts, a beauty store that's being repurposed, and Family Dollar. They're not in the same shopping center, but they're connected by an alley. I've been to Arts for pizza a few times. Okay, last month, we discussed a plan for repairing our streetlights moving forward with upgrades. And tonight, we're proposing the first step. Twenty-seven streetlights basically where Northwestern crosses Southfield Freeway and a little bit on both, both roads. Of these lights, seven have either knocked down or fallen down. Ten are what DTE would consider condemned or unsafe. Eight need painting, and two are serviceable. So obviously, these do need some work. We're proposing selling these to DTE for $1. They will then upgrade all the lights, repair, replace, install LED lights for $37,000. Thereafter, our cost will actually reduce annually. That's because of two reasons. One, although we own these lights, they're under sort of a strange maintenance agreement with DTE where we pay them to replace bulbs and lenses. So the difference between our cost and the new cost isn't that great. And secondly, there's a lot of energy savings from switching the lights. So we will have 27 new, safe, bright LED lights. And we will save $1,600 a year on that.
Okay. Counsel, are there, is there any questions?
Sounds like a no-brainer.
Okay, can we entertain a motion?
Councilwoman Banks, um, council, uh, council does hereby authorize contracting with DTE to acquire, um, and provide street lighting service for 10 streetlights located on the north side of Northwestern Highway, west of Southfield Road, and 17 streetlights located on both the east and west side of Southfield Road, north of Northwestern Highway.
Support. Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the streetlight improvements as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel, we have an enact, an ordinance to enact.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1748, Deer Feeding Prohibition Ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the enactment of ordinance number 1748, Deer Feeding Prohibition Ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, next, we come to the counsel portion. Uh, Counsel, we'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Um, I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I would like to, to announce, if it hadn't already been announced, that the state has awarded San Marino $1.2 million for the conversion of, uh, approximately 100, 90, from 100 to 90 homes there, from the well water to, uh, to, to, uh, to city water. This is a significant accomplishment. And this is a project that I have been, um, associated with for the last two to three years. I bird dogged this, shepherded it and/or facilitated it. And I arranged, um, whenever the homeowners needed anything, I facilitated that. And whenever the city needed anything from the homeowners, I facilitated that. So I'm really, uh, glad that this is, um, uh, the state came through and, uh, but just from a standpoint of safety, um, human, uh, safety, and also from the efficiency of, um, of, um, all the individuals there. And also, one of the other prevailing little things that came through on this because the homeowners, you know, they, they, um, they have been living there, a lot of them, but they have very small water bills. And they, they have very nice lawns over there, and they water their grass, uh, with the, um, well water, which is cheap. So, but one of the things that the state is, the state is allowing, allowing for the homeowners to continue to, to use that water for irrigation purposes, uh, use the well water. But there will be safeguards put in place with the hookup that will prevent them from that water being used for, um, uh, let's say, drinkable water, household water, the brush, your TV. The water, the well water would not be used only for irrigation purposes. So I'm really, really proud of that, uh, for, for the homeowners. And that will be, uh, pretty much, I think we're, we're trying to work out a, a public announcement and/or, um, uh, photo op and, and do all the things that need to be done just to get that publicized, uh, in the city and also perhaps in the, in the local newspapers. So the other item I want to bring up is that, uh, the, the Veterans Administration has a project is for, you know, we've had over two, 2 million women who have served in the military. That's not me making noises. I haven't touched this thing. But anyway, there are over 2 million, 2 million, 2, maybe it is me. I don't know why I'm just talking.
It's your time.
Your time is up.
Maybe what I'm getting ready to say is too important to be, uh, publicized here. But, but, but over 2 million women have served in the military as military veterans. Tomorrow, March 8th, the Veterans Administration will be kicking off with the Library of Congress, a program which is entitled, "I Am Not Invisible 3.0." And that's a program that deals with the veterans, uh, the Library of Congress and the Veteran History Project. This is a project that I worked on as a chair of the Veterans Commission, wherein we interviewed, interviewed veterans, combat veterans. And their story now is housed in the Library of Congress for historical purposes, for everyone, uh, to look at that particular, their accomplishment in, in, uh, in combat. And tomorrow at 6:00, 6:00 PM, on Facebook, the VA nationwide be, be, uh, doing the same thing with women veterans. They would be interviewing the women veterans, captioning their story. And that story will be there at the Library of Congress into perpetuity. And the individuals nationwide, worldwide can go in and, and look at those stories. The Veteran History Project, and just to cut to the chase on this again, is, has been used by historians in Germany, all around the world. Southfield produced over 300, um, veteran interviews for the Veteran History Project. 200 of them are there in the Southfield Public Library. If you go there, you can look up, uh, some of the more famous veterans who have lived in Southfield. We had a Tuskegee Airman here, Colonel Alexander, he's, he's being interviewed. Uh, well, his interview is there, and quite a few other vets, uh, who lived in Southfield. And when we conducted that, we worked with our congressional office. At the time, it was Santa Levin. We've got veterans from Bloomfield, Saginaw, some people from Ohio. They just came to Southfield to be interviewed so their project could be housed in the, in the Library of Congress. So tomorrow at 6:30, at 6:00 PM, the Library of Congress will be interviewing veteran, veteran women. And just for individual purposes here, and if, um, you can go on facebook.com and just slash Vet History Project, and you can pull down this particular episode, the forum that comes on tomorrow at 6:00. And if individuals would like to find more about this, just give me a call here at the city. And, uh, one more thing. I, hopefully, uh, my, my mic will not kick me off. But the Oakland County Veteran Resources, they'll, on March 31, from 9:00 AM to noon, in Novi, there will be a Veterans Research Fair for all veterans. They will be offering a $50 gift certificate from Myers. There will be a food box. It was, it's March 31, 2022, from 9:00 AM to noon at the Novi Civic Center. That is 45175, 10 Mile Road in Novi, Michigan. So if anyone wished to, um, get more information on that, just feel free to call me here at the City Hall, and I'll relay this information to you. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, briefly about, um, just, uh, you already mentioned it earlier, Madam, about Women's History Month. So I definitely want to acknowledge that and just speak to the point of, the fact about voting. And I hope I don't steal my clerk's thunder, because I don't know if she was already going there or not. But I wanted to just mention the fact that, you know, the, you know, the United States, we passed 15th Amendment in 1870. Uh, they gave people the right, all people the right to vote, yet it didn't include women. And so it took until 1920, with the efforts of people of all color, race, and creed to come together, um, and gender, for that matter, to get a amendment to the Constitution, the 19th, uh, Amendment in 1920, that then, um, solidified the fact that women were included. Because, uh, you know, clearly, there was still a very gender-biased society that we lived in, um, at that time, and to some degree, still is. Uh, still, we fight for that right, um, with the, under Voting Rights Act in, uh, 1965, and still today as well. And, uh, but just the fact that it, it was just in the 1900s that women got the right to vote says a whole lot about our country, how slow things can, do happen and change. But, um, that movement in itself shows that when we all work together, we get more things done. And so I just want to, uh, acknowledge the, the month of Mar, of March for, uh, for the women in the city of Southfield and everywhere else. And, uh, let's continue to fight on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I have nothing, uh, to add this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. Um, just, uh, two, uh, three quick announcements. One is that this morning, the City Parks and Rec started taking picnic shelter reservations for this year. And just remember that they go fast, and I'm sure that more people want to get outside this year. You can contact Parks and Rec at 248-796-4620. Um, you have to do it in person. And the lobby is closed, so everyone must enter the pavilion through the plaza deck doors located at the rear of the building, the ones that face east. And, um, you can start that at 9:00 AM in the morning, cash and credit card only. Um, also, the Southfield Community Garden at the Mary Thompson Farm will, will begin accepting new gardeners tomorrow, Tuesday, March 8th, which is unusual. They usually are, are very full. And it's a, you're a community gardener, you get a 400-square-foot plot. You get mulch, water, free rental of garden tools. Uh, and they have, it's just a very nice place, but they are for, they are for rent for the season. And again, you can contact the Parks and Rec Recreation Desk at 248-796-4620 between 9:00 and 5:00, and they will be, uh, happy to assist you and answer any questions. As it's been mentioned by our council presidents and Councilman Cruz, March is, uh, Women's History Month. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to a couple of women in history. Um, and these are all in the medical field, that, for example, the first woman in the United States to earn a medical degree was Dr. Elizabeth Brackwell, Blackwell, um, who graduated from Geneva Medical College in New York in 1849. Um, she was actually rejected by every medical school that she applied to, except Geneva Medical College, who the deans said that out of the 150 male applicants that were accepted, if they all agree, then they will accept her. But if one person did not, then she would be rejected from that medical school. Uh, luckily, even back then in 1849, all of the 150 male applicants accepted her, and she was the first woman to get a medical degree. In 1864, as the Civil War was being fought, Dr. Rebecca Lee Crumpler became the first black woman in the United States to earn a medical degree. And she was also one of the first female physician authors publishing a book of medical discourses with a focus on maternal and pediatric medical care. The first Native American woman in the United States to earn a medical, medical degree was Dr. Susan, uh, Picote. In 1889, she opened a hospital in the reservation town of Walt Hill, Nebraska, and it is now a museum to her legacy. Um, Dr. Ida Gray Nelson Rollins is the first, is recognized as the first African-American female dentist in the United States, earning her degree right here at the University of Michigan College of Dentistry in 1890. Um, and then, of course, you have the first woman and the first Hispanic to serve as a Surgeon General, Dr. Novella, in the United States in 1990. And her most notable impact is her initiative to enter the tobacco advertisement targeting children. So I just want to give a shout-out to, to these women during March and, uh, share that moment of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a lot or anything, um, more to add than what's already been added, except to remind people that on Sunday, we will have the daylight savings time in effect again. So we will spring forward, beginning on Sunday. So next, our next meeting will be an hour earlier. So just, I just want to remind everyone of that. Uh, and thank you very much for, uh, attending the meeting tonight. Um, Counsel, I'm sorry. Mayor?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator?
I have nothing this evening also. Thank you.
Madam Attorney?
I do have something this evening. I have an ordinance. This council, in December of 2021, had approved, uh, a 24-month, 24-month option to acquire the former John Gray School, which we've already, uh, talked about, um, in an early discussion regarding the RUDD. Um, that was also with the Southfield Non-Prefered Housing Corporation, with Lockwood, where they formed a new corporation titled the John Grace Arms Limited Dividend Housing Association LLC. And by doing that, they are going to also, as you may have already heard, um, applying to MISTDA for low-income housing tax credits. So one of the requirements, uh, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm... One of the requirements is that we, um, have an ordinance in Southfield, what they call a pilot ordinance. Uh, it's a model tax ordinance, so there's not... It's a model tax ordinance, so there's not a lot of changes we can make. Under Title 11, Chapter 140, we generally exempt housing projects owned by nonprofit housing corporation or other qualified entity that's going to be financed with federally aided or MISTDA-aided mortgage from, add the law on property taxes imposed by the state or the public, I'm sorry, the political subdivision in which the project is located. So we have presented that ordinance. This is similar to what was done in 2014. I believe it was with River Place and...
That's correct.
It was with River Place. One of the things is the adoption of this pilot ordinance would only apply in the event that the tax credits are allocated to the project. So I have attached a copy of the model ordinance, MISTDA, looked at it with, I always mess up Janay's name, but she's from Lockwood, and she was already up at the podium, so I would just like to introduce that to counsel for approval, as you've heard other information about John Grace, and I believe there's an April 1st application deadline.
So we have two things to do. We have to approve the establishment of the payment in lieu, the pilot ordinance, and then introduce the ordinance.
Right.
Am I correct? Okay.
Correct.
Counsel, are there any questions? Okay, may I have?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the establishment of a payment in lieu and taxes ordinance for John Grace Arms Limited Dividend Housing Association, LLC.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the establishment of the payment in lieu of taxes pilot ordinance for John Grace. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the introduction of ordinance number 1749, John Grace Pilot Ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the introduction of ordinance number 1749, John Grace Pilot Ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counsel.
Madam Clerk?
Good evening. I'll be very utily brief this evening. I just wanted to wish our Southfield resident who says she's actually in Vegas right now, Mrs. Maddie Brown, turned 100 years of age today, and she's a resident here in Southfield, but she's traveling. So as we celebrate Women's Month, it's amazing for someone to have been around a whole century. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see our treasurer, planner, successor, or an engineer. We have nothing to schedule. Does anyone have anything else for the meeting tonight? Seeing and hearing none, I declare this meeting closed. Thank you.